Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We're doing a pretty good job. I'm impressed. I can see a lot of faces. It's good to see your faces. And for the most part, I think we'll just sort of turn this over to manager Hoffman and he can bring us up to date.
Okay, I'm just gonna put everyone on mute real quick because there's some static there. You guys can unmute yourself when you want to talk with her. Just so there's no static here. Um, so I'm sorry that we're meeting so late into this epidemic. I know that the past two weeks have been crazy. And we've been trying to deal with this, um, you know, as the news breaks and just try to stay ahead of everything. And it's been, um, it's been frustrating to, you know, try to do stuff proactively here for the city of Virgens. When you have, you know, we're encompassed by the state of Vermont and we really have to, you know, act in conjunction with them. So it's, you know, it's been a difficult balance, but what we've done is, um, you know, we've collaborated with the neighboring towns, um, to try to gather resources, information, um, and be on the same page with one another. So we're speaking with a unified voice. And we're problem solving together for our region. So we've been having meetings approximately every other day via Zoom. I sent, you guys saw a copy of my directives I gave to city employees. You know, we're operating essential duties only. That goes for City Hall, Public Works. If it's not, if you're just doing busy work and stuff, we don't need to risk you getting sick, especially our public work staff and, and police officers and other essential employees we have, and a lot of them like Public Works where multiple has their firefighters as well. So, you know, it's just in this, at this time, it's not, it's not worth risking spreading an infection upon our scarce resources that we have here. So, um, essential, we're operating essential, essential work only. And yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at right now. We're just trying to notify the public and, uh, of what resources are available. The mayor's doing a great job with the Boys and Girls Club to get meals out to everyone. I don't know what it's going to look like getting meals out from the school district now. They've been, um, they've been providing meals along bus routes. Maybe Tara can give us an update in a second on how that's going to go. But, you know, officially as of 5:00 PM, as we all know, there's a stay and stay at home order. I've already gotten some questions. Like, can I, you know, I'm going to be at my store anyway downtown. Doesn't matter if I go and clean up or whatever. And I'm, I just defer to the state for now, but we should really be telling everybody to, you know, to stay at home. I mean, that's the only way that this is going to go away. Is if we all play a part. So, um, so that's really, that's what I got right now to start, start off the discussion. So, uh, yeah, I'd like to have a good discussion with you guys. It's been too long. So.
Let me ask this question. Um, I've been asked, are they doing garbage and recycling this weekend?
I actually, I should touch base. I haven't heard anything. So I've been talking to, um, what's his name? It's like Robert or something. He's the boss of R and L. I have his direct contact info, so I can reach out to him to make sure. But I, I talked to him a couple of days ago. He's business as usual. Wednesdays and Saturdays, I think is the normal schedule, right? That's,
Right, right.
That has not changed. And I don't believe it will change because in the executive order, you know, it's essential functions have to continue. So, that's an essential, essential function. And I can also, I saw, yeah, maybe I'll touch base with him tomorrow and see how he's handling the executive order, but he's exempt in that executive order. So, I, I believe there'll just be business as usual. And he's got my direct number and email as well. So, I've instructed him to let me know if anything changes.
Well, maybe Morgan, after you've confirmed that, maybe Morgan can put something on front porch forum just to, so people don't keep calling and asking.
Yeah, that is, that is a question we get a bunch of.
Yeah, okay.
Good point. Yeah, and anything else from anybody?
I can just say that they, the school is still putting on delivering meals as of right now. Um, the superintendent sent out a memo, that it was considered, considered an essential function based on the Secretary of Education's memo this morning to her.
That's great news. That's great news. And then another update, about an hour and a half ago, our paving project got postponed. Till the executive order is gone. So it was funny because this morning I got, Jim and I got emails from B Trans, asking questions about the paving project from the engineers. And I'm like, wait, is this still on track after last night's executive order? And he's like, as far as I know. And then, lo and behold, we got a, we got a notification an hour and a half ago that's being put on hold. So, so there's that too. It's, it's on hold until the executive order expires at the least. So that's April 15th or something for right now. Also, something that we have to, stay cognizant on is, um, you know, our cash on hand. Taxes are due on May 15th. You know, I've, I've heard the federal government is going to waive mortgage deadlines or push more, or try to push mortgage deadlines, which may, uh, push escrow payments from taxes. So, which makes, makes us a little nervous over here as far as cash flows go. But, because I, I'm new here, I, you know, generally when we have cash on hand, we invested in bonds and CDs and those types of things. And we had some cash on hand when I started, um, but I didn't want to invest it because I wanted to get a feel for our cash flows as I got acclimated. So, we, we do have cash on hand right now, but we may, um, you know, put projects that may have been, you know, like pay, I talked to Jim a little bit, Jim and chief a little bit about this. We'll discuss it more in depth. But, there's, there's projects that we wait, some projects like resurfacing and stuff that we wait till the end of the year to accomplish. And, you know, other things like body cameras and stuff that we may, that even though they may be budgeted, out of cautious for caution for our cash on hand, uh, we may hold, hold off on those projects until this whole, this whole, you know, epidemic kind of goes down, it goes away a little bit because I don't, I don't know if we're going to get, our tax, our tax revenue this quarter like we, like we're used to. So we'll see, we'll see how that goes. Deadlines, May 15th and, we'll just cross our fingers and hope this, the epidemic gets better and people pay their taxes.
And how are we paying the monthly bills?
How current, how are we paying the monthly bills?
Because usually when we have a meeting, we're signing documents to pay. So how, how's that being done now?
Yeah. So I mean, that's the same, you know, if we have a bill that needs to, we have reoccurring bills. We'll cut the check even if it's before the council meeting and on your warrants, they'll say it's paid on the warrant list and some, some won't be paid yet. So, to try to not lapse on payments and to avoid penalties and interest and those types of things. You know, we pay the phone bills and the electric bills before the warrants were issued. The other ones, I mean, we'll do warrants like, like normal. It'll, it'll be like normal, you know, we weren't going to have a council meeting for the, the second meeting of March. Anyway, we weren't scheduled to have one until, um, April, the second, second week in April. So it'll be, it'll be business as usual. And, um, you know, the way, we went to the cloud like eight months ago or so, and the way our system is set up, it's very friendly for remote work. And I can show you guys some of it. Actually, we have, um, so we have, we have this program called Microsoft Teams where me, you know, we can collaborate and you can actually do video conferencing on, on this program. But it interfaces really well with Outlook and Word. It's a Microsoft program. It's actually the new Skype for Business program. And we have, where we're on the Microsoft cloud right now. So we have like the full Microsoft Prime package and that Microsoft Teams, we can chat back and forth. We can jump right into a video. I can share my screens with them. I can actually share files in that, in that chat. So, me, Morgan, um, Abby, um, and now Kim have really been using it a lot to collaborate, like we're in the office together almost. And then we have other, we, you know, NIMRIC are, are, this is our NIMRIC program, which you could see we're set up on the cloud for NIMRIC. So I can go into our accounting program right from, right from my computer anywhere. And then of course we have Zoom and also we have our entire, this is our shared, shared drive. So these are all the city, most of the city files. And they're, they're again, you know, there's a program called OneDrive where it's, you know, cloud-based file storage that I can access anywhere. So, you know, the, those three things combined. And then with this Zoom subscription allow, um, the, the, allow City Hall to really work from home very, very efficiently. I think more so than other municipalities in the area. So, um, so anyway, that being said, you know, Abby is plugging away a payroll and bills and doing her day-to-day stuff at home. Morgan, Morgan comes to the office to, um, you know, help with, the property files obviously have to be, you know, that's a physical, physical task, but she's going to, we're going to work on the grand list and stuff remotely. So I, yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to work as much remotely as possible. And, uh, you know, for those that can't, like Public Works and stuff, we're just, you know, they, they got, we, we got to keep them home. We, I can't, I can't have people doing busy work and risk getting sick. So, that's where things kind of stand right now. Any, any other questions? Oh.
There we go. Sorry, I was trying to unmute. Uh, maybe we could get a quick update from the chief.
Hey, chief, are you, are you there? Sorry, sorry, chief. I had you on mute.
That's all right. Um, yeah, um, I wouldn't say it's business as usual. It is. I mean, we're, we're doing things like we usually do. We putting together a, uh, we put together a protocol for, um, a contingency plan for the, uh, dealing with the COVID-19 issue. And, um, what we've done is we're limiting contact as much as we can. We're not stopping vehicles. And I say that tongue in cheek. We are, unless it's a, a real noticeable or severe infraction, i.e. impaired driving or real excessive speed. We're, we're out, we're being seen, we're on the side of the road. People still slow down just by the mere presence of, and sight of a cruiser, but, um, we're not stopping vehicles. Uh, the exchange of motor vehicle information and whatnot is just something, um, the state police aren't doing it. And most police agencies throughout the state have just curtailed that kind of contact just because we don't know what we're dealing with when we stop somebody on the side of the road, whether, you know, if they're going to be coughing, whether they're infected or not. As far as responding to any other complaints, if we have to go to somebody's house, the officers are wearing gloves and they're wearing a mask. If at all possible, I have the officer try to do business outside of the house versus going into the house. This is just a safety precaution for the officers. Um, and, um, like I say, we're following the same safety protocol within the building. Uh, we're wiping things down with antiseptic wipes. We're not doing VIN verifications. We're not doing fingerprinting. And until things seem to have faded, we're not going to change that process. If there's a call that comes in where there's a, you know, a, a significant event like a burglary or an armed robbery or whatever else, we're going to continue to do business the way we've always done it. Uh, but we do it with the utmost caution. But for minor motor vehicle accidents, we have the operators exchange information. If there's a significant accident, uh, we will respond and do what we've got to do. Uh, one of the challenges that first responders are running across throughout the state and throughout the country is there's, there, the availability of personal protective equipment is pretty much non-existent. Uh, we have gotten our hands on some, um, antiseptic, um, spray or, or we have gotten wipes. Phil Wager from Ferrisburg, the Ferrisburg chief did bring in some extra masks that he came across and we've got those. We're very thankful for that. It was very thoughtful of him. Dan, uh, our city manager, Dan has, uh, gotten ahold of some, uh, anti, uh, antibacterial, uh, hand sanitizer. And, uh, from what I hear, some of the local distilleries around the state are, uh, ramping up their production. So we should be able to get that. But one of the continuing challenges is face masks. And as, as time goes along, we're finding out more and more that, uh, that, uh, some of the things we thought, that we thought we knew about the COVID-19 virus aren't exactly as we thought. But nevertheless, we're doing whatever we can to safeguard the guys. Uh, one of the things that we've, we're anticipating is that as this lockdown period goes on, we're anticipating that there's going to be more, calls for service, domestic related. Uh, people are cooped up in houses if they are. If people's income is, uh, stopped or curtailed, uh, there's financial issues. We anticipate problems. It could be anything from the, uh, from domestic violence to armed robberies and burglaries. So, we're anticipating that. Likewise, we've been out on the street more so than ever. I will tell you that calls for service have gone down in some respects. And, um, I hope it stays that way, but nevertheless, we're anticipating the worst. And I know the state police are, have taken some pretty significant measures to, uh, prevent their officers from, from contacting, possibly contacting people that have got the virus. Or maybe carriers of the virus. Uh, anybody driving through town in a vehicle from out of state, we, we don't, even if it's in state, we don't know what these people may have. So, we've got to be prepared. And if one officer gets it, chances are we're all going to get it. And I do have some officers and family members that are, uh, are in that high-risk category. And, um, we've got to continue to do our job no matter what, but we've got to be smart about it too.
And we are, I mean, we are. I mean, we, we had, we had an officer come back from Florida. We immediately self-quarantined them, even though we didn't have to, you know, we're, we're being overly cautious if anything, I would say.
Well, I think, I think everything we've done so far, that's fine. I think it's, I think what we've done is prudent. Uh, we can't afford that because it'll spread like wildfire and then we'll have nobody. And, um, we can't afford that. Any questions for me? Uh, I, I will tell you that we've been out on the street. We have talked to people. Uh, people have been really good. Uh, people have been very supportive. Uh, we appreciate that. And, um, we're going to continue. People are very apprehensive. And, um, we're going to continue to be out there to reassure people and, and just make it look like it's business as usual. And for the most part, it is. I, I, I have had a lot of comments from people from outside the city and from around the state that pay attention to our website, city website. And, uh, Facebook pages and people are very, very appreciative of what we're doing as a city and as a, as a regional community to make sure people are taken care of. And kudos to all the efforts of everybody that's, uh, been doing what they've been doing. That's all I've got, Dan.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Daniel, if I may, I just want to jump in and, excuse me, just clearing my throat. It's been a pretty amazing experience, I think, for the city manager and I to work with the five towns. Uh, it's, it's a great group of folks who have, are taking this very, very seriously. And chief, uh, I'll be getting more information to you. One of the things that we are working on is a second drop-off location for the food shelf. They have some very specific needs. So we are trying to come up with a way to have as little interaction as possible and provide a secondary drop-off point. And, uh, Ferrisburg has provided a trailer for the food shelf that is currently at the police station. And just after we convened this meeting, I got a call from Mary Ann Castamore at the food shelf. And we'll get those details that ironed out tomorrow. We should be ready to go by then.
Yeah, we've got the, we've got the trailer pre-positioned there. It's, uh, facing the cameras so we can kind of keep an eye on things. And, um, it's in a very accessible place. So again, thank you to Chief Wager and the Ferrisburg Fire Department for stepping up with that. Everybody's been great. I mean, everybody across the board.
So does anyone have any questions for Daniel or me or any other topics of discussion?
I have one that I've been concerned about a little bit, and that is getting out on WCAX. There have, there's a little ticker says, do not put anything into your septic or sewer system except toilet paper. Um, and that's all well and good, but unless you're watching TV, you have no idea that that's been on there. I think that's something we've got to remind people as it could put the whole system down. If everybody starts, can't find toilet paper and start using baby wipes or whatever. So I think we've got to be prudent about the septic, the sewer system here.
Yep. Lit, lit. Thanks for bringing that up. Uh, we've actually done, uh, three Facebook videos. And those three videos have gotten almost 7,000 views. And we always talk about the toilet paper. And that information is also on the website. So, uh, please, please, please direct everyone to our website. There's a lot of information there and Daniel has established a COVID-19 tab and, uh, direct everyone there. It's a great resource.
We can't afford to let the McDonough Drive pump station get clogged up.
Nope.
Yeah.
Dan, I was going to ask you, or maybe somebody else knows. And now with the advent of this, uh, of this, direction from the governor, um, they're going to be doing curbside from the, from the Shaw's. Are they going to still allow people to go into the store?
I, I don't know the answer to that yet. I don't know. I can reach out to Shaw's.
I will find it.
Yeah, I know.
I, I also heard that they were going to have a, a specific time that the elderly can go into elderly or, or those that may be compromised, go into the store.
They are doing that. They are doing, they're currently doing that. That's Tuesdays and Thursdays, seven to nine AM.
And for those like me that qualify, I encourage you to go at that time period.
Yeah. Yeah. So Tuesdays and I'm, I put that in my update. Yeah, I'm, I'm drafting an update right. The sewage, that's a good, that's a good thing to put on there.
Jeff, you just, you just barely made the elderly age bracket, didn't you?
I did, but I qualify. So I had to go get supplies, cookies for those meals for all.
See you tomorrow at seven.
Yeah.
Um, but, but Shaw's has gone honestly above and beyond. Like they didn't have to do that. They, they also put up shields at the register, plexiglass type stuff. So there's a barrier there.
They marked out, they've marked out areas on the floor with blue X's to keep their patrons six feet apart. Uh, one thing I do have concern about the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, trailer when we put foodstuffs in there, um, the way toilet paper has become such a high commodity, I almost think I gotta put an armed guard on the damn thing to keep people from stealing toilet paper. If any ever gets in there. But I'm being facetious, but.
Yeah, chief, one of the things that we're talking about is, is coming up with perhaps a couple of volunteers who can just stand by during collection hours. And after those collection hours are over, close it up. What they would like to do is start by doing it on a Saturday. Close it up for 48 hours so that hopefully the virus can dissipate if anything should be infected. And then deliver it to the food shelf on Tuesdays and then repeat that as long as we can until such time as we have to consider being open more.
Okay. And if anybody knows of a, of a, um, a source for the antiseptic wipes or the antibacterial wipes, um, or if you happen to see them, we're, and we've got some, but we don't have many. So, um, if there's any way somebody can alert me as to where they are and I can scoot down there and get them because we use those quite a bit.
Mayor?
Yes.
In terms of either the Boys and Girls Club food program or the food shelf, what's the most efficient way to provide support for that? I mean, is it, is it cash? Is it donations or is it physical donations of food? What's the best way to, to make it as efficient as possible?
Well, I'll tell you, uh, we've been doing it for a week and as a, we delivered 2,235 meals.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have received, uh, some nice cash donations, but we are running right down to the wire. Ian is coming over tomorrow and, uh, we're going to talk about some inventory that he might be able to share with us, which is great.
I know that. Yep.
Yeah. So that, that, that's great. I'm excited about that. But right now cash is the best thing. The supply chain is shrinking because we order through, uh, Reinhardt, who supplies to restaurants. Because restaurants are closing, their warehouses are emptying. Uh, we had to scramble today to find meat. There's a shortage of hamburger. There's a shortage of just about everything. So we, we tracked down 400 pounds of hamburger and it's sitting over in my freezer. So we, that's, that's, cash is what we need.
Okay, great.
Anybody else have anything?
I, I do, Mr. Mayor. This is Dave. Um, and Lowell might be able to answer that question. Um, can you tell us what's occurring down at Collins Arrow State?
If anybody can work from home, they are working from home. Obviously the production floor cannot do that. So they're just being smart about working. You know, coming in if they're healthy, staying home if they're sick.
Okay. And, um, chief, you, you and I had talked about Northland's Job Corps and, um, and as far as we know, it, they, they have sent everyone home and, and they, they, they were planning on ceasing operation over there. Is that the case or?
I, I haven't, so, so the director called me on Friday in a bit of a panic about a possible, say a home order coming because he couldn't, um, he had like about 10 students that didn't have a place to go. So as of right now, he, there, there is some stat, the staff was going to continue to stay on campus regardless. All the students were supposed to leave. But he called me with an update on Friday stating that there is about 10 students that could not leave the campus. So there, they have a few students still there.
Right, right. Um, yeah, probably wasn't, I, it probably wasn't the smartest thing to send them home. But that, that being the case, it is what it is. I, I guess the other thing, um, the other thing that, Daniel, you and I've spoken about this and, and I've spoken with, um, with you, Mr. Mayor and, and also chief. You know, one of the things that disturbs me about this, and, and I'm not sure what it is that we can do about it other than, if everyone agrees, communicate our concern and our level of frustration to the governor. And, and we might as well forget things on the national level. But the thing that really, really disturbs me, irritates me is that, um, that it's been too little to late. Uh, incremental steps do not work. There are a number of places in other parts of the world that have done much better with far fewer resources. This is embarrassing. That could be harder than any other place in the world by this. This is absurd. The only way that this thing is by limited, unnecessary movement. Um, and my understanding is that the governor plans for us to do that. And what I'm talking about is, is the threat relative to our resources being overwhelmed. We've got 30 some, it's probably at the 40 now. Stating to this four and a half hours. And, um, and I, I don't know what, if anything, to be done, but at this point, other places have taken very definitive. been done, but at this point, other places have taken very definitive steps from my attitude of saying.
Well, Dave, I, I think the only thing we can do is municipality. Um, if they, if this is something the municipality, you know, the city decides to do is um, if they have any ideas of what the governor should be doing to, I mean, what, what should have been done is passe, but what people think. What the, what the, what the uh, governor could be doing is something else. And if um, if we can uh, if there's an idea that we think we ought to pass along, then we ought to do that. Uh, you know, there's a, there's a uh, there's always a threat of people coming into the state that could be carrying it. And uh, the, from what I've been told by Commissioner Schilling of, of uh, Department of Public Safety, that they anticipate hundreds of people getting this, the possibility of hundreds of people in the state getting this virus. Um, and um, whereas the time goes on, there's probably going to be more availability of, because I know people are, you know, the industry is ramping up provisions to address it. But at the same time, the numbers of people that are getting it are gonna be more, uh, there's gonna be more volume. So it, it's kind of a catch 22, but um, I, you know, who knows what's gonna happen a week from now or two weeks from now as, as things become, if things become more pronounced and more uh, more of a challenge, then they may have to take more drastic measures. But right now, uh, the last time I talked to him, which was last weekend, um, the state has no intent of closing its borders. Um, and that may be a controversial decision. Uh, but nevertheless, that's the way they're gonna go. And I, I, until things, can only if things get really bad, that I think they'll probably do something like that. But uh, they had no intent of, of uh, of closing borders of the state. And, and I know there's a lot of people uh, coming up to Vermont from out of state. Well, I went out um, day before yesterday, I believe it was. I went out, I took a ride out to the uh, Champlain Bridge because there was a rumor that uh, the New York State Police were stopping uh, traffic coming across the bridge from New York or into New, or into Newark. And um, that wasn't the case, obviously. But one of the things I saw that on my way out there was probably a dozen cars coming into Vermont and 10 of the 12 of them were New Yorkers. And this is around 10, 10, 10:30 in the morning. So I, I, I've heard that from a number of people on the street that uh, how come the governor doesn't do that? And the only thing I think you can do is write a letter or talk to Diane and, and Matt and our, and Senator Hardy and um, and send a letter to the governor. Anything short of that, uh, I think it's gonna have to be worse than it is right now before that, we see that happen.
I, I, I would, I would, he, he doesn't, he doesn't seem to be, um, e- either he or, or uh, Dr. Levine, who's the commissioner of the Department of Health, they, they, they seem to be behind the curve. Um, and it's a day late and a dollar short. And we're, we're on track to be in a very, very bad situation. They're actually, you know, the conservative numbers of 7,000 people uh, seriously ill. Um, and they're not sure what percentage of those would need that. We have 210. And there, there's absolutely no reason at this point why there should be any unnecessary interstate travel. I mean, it, the, the only way you, you can look at any number of other places in the world and that's how it's been stopped. There's in, in the Philippines where, where I go, there's 57 million people in an area the size of Vermont, New Hampshire, half of Maine. They, they have hundreds of cases and they're testing. And, and, and movement is curtailed. And, and it's working. They're right next door to China. You know, we're not gonna do anything about what should have occurred at, at a national level. But I, and, and I've talked to a number of friends of mine who work in healthcare. These people are, are scared. They're afraid. When the people that we depend on take care of the rest of us start to get sick, it's over. So I, I don't know if, if we, we need to absolutely end any some level of act at the state level. Um, because all you, all you have to do is, is watch the news, go on Vermont Digger. They, they don't have a clue.
Right. David, if, if I can, I'm not gonna pretend to be able to read the tea leaves, but uh, the governor has, he has suspended Amtrak's service and based, based, uh, based on some of the actions that I've seen come out of Montpelier, I think that is yet another way of gathering the chicks into the barn uh, before tighter measures are taken. I, I would not be shocked if we saw some restriction on interstate travel very soon.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor. I think that's common.
I, I would hope so. The issue, the issue is, is that, you know, if we look at the history of the action that's been taken, it's, it's, it's too little, too late. I, I mean, every, at, at this point, every single hour that they don't do something, more people are going to die. And, and that's not being over dramatic about it.
I agree.
I have one, just one comment. Um, Billy Wager called Michael because he's on the uh, you know, fire department. And according to the information that Bill Wager has, they're, they have closed all of the borders into New York on all, all directions. So New England is almost, well, it is protected because you can't go through Canada and you can't get to New England without going through New York. So if, if that's all happening now, then I think that protection is, we don't have to close our borders because you can't get here anyway.
When, when, when did New York close their?
They, oh, well, Michael's going to be on a phone call at seven o'clock and I can email you the time that it's gonna happen. But um, that is one of the orders that uh, Bill Wager got today that that was close, that New York borders are going to be closed. I don't know if it's today or tomorrow. Um, but I'll know after seven o'clock.
Right. That's great.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're in a tough situation. You know, it's frustrating to look at the state and, you know, say, you know, we should be doing this, this and this. But we can only control what we can control, you know. So we're saying, again, we're doing only essential work here um, with our government. And we got to spread awareness within our communities so people stay inside. I mean, that's some, i- if it's, if people are gonna stay inside, if we bring them a meal, then we should bring them a meal. You know, we got to find out who those people are. We got to spread the word and we got to, you know, spread, spread phone numbers and resources out there to people. But just try to do what we can for our community.
It's important that everyone, friends, families and neighbors know what you know. Sharing information is critical right now.
I still unfortunately think that some people just aren't taking it seriously and are out and about still, you know. So and, and it's, it's not, it's not cool, you know. And, and, and that's something that we can help here at the local level possibly. So I, it's tough, you know, it's tough.
Anything else from anyone?
Well, we, I, I'd just like to say that we clearly made the right decision in hiring you, Daniel.
I couldn't agree more.
You're doing a great.
Thank you. Trial by fire, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Special note of that.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll get there. Yeah.
So in the meantime, please direct everyone to the city website. Uh, there's a, there is a lot of information there. If you don't already, please follow the city on Facebook. There's a lot of information there. We try to put everything out that we can. Uh, we've been working very closely with the partnership to spread as much of the same information to everyone as possible. And that continues. Um, anything else I should be talking about, Daniel?
I think we covered it all. We, you know, we have plenty of resources, you know. We, yeah, we have, we have the partnership that i- it's all over the businesses. You, Mr. Mayor, you, you, you've really been handling the nonprofits well, you know. I, us together have been really coordinating resources between the government and governments and nonprofits. There's plenty of resources out there. We just got to um, you know, figure out how to use them the best way possible. And we're doing the best we can.
All right. Anybody have anything else? Okay, Lowell?
Yes.
It's your turn.
Oh, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Second.
Mark.
Oh, thank you.
The motion, Eric, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.